Good evening. It is December 21st, 2023. The time is 2:00 PM. And who has joined us by phone?
Bill Brooks.
Hi, Bill. We're just getting started right now. I'm calling this meeting.
Okay.
In attendance are Commissioners Brooks, Matarie, and Duncan. With Commissioner Brooks on the phone, are there changes to the agenda?
Nope.
Hearing none, I will call for public comments. Okay, hearing none. We'll go ahead with our first item, which is Justice Center Expansion Owners Rep Clarification. And so Bruce, did you want to start us off?
Yeah, sure. Largely, we have executed a contract with Hury. We have a buyer's representative. And we just want to make clear that the buyer's representative represents the board and that all communication regarding this project should go to that buyer's representative first. And then any processing of any documentation or anything related to the project itself would be distributed from that point person, which is David Mendez with Hury. And also, we had talked about this, and it is an action item, of giving David Mendez authorization to spend up to a certain amount with the understanding, and there is a protocol, that all of the board members would be notified upon making that decision, up to $25,000 for any kind of emergency-type decisions that need to be made that have a time crunch, if you will, so that we don't want to be in a situation because of the public meeting notices and the fact that the board has to get together, that we don't cause any delays. And so with that said, if anyone has any discussion, comments, questions, or motion.
Yeah, just a little bit of clarification, just so I make sure I'm understanding. So David Mendez is our point person. But anything like that happened Friday, David would notify the board immediately, full board. And then that way, we would just be in the loop. I would recommend we do this with our department heads countywide, where if there's an emergency off hours and they can't get ahold of the board, they do have a certain authority to fix something. If we've got a dock floating away on Lake Coeur d'Alene, they're going to call a contractor and get them out. If we've got flooding, you know, here on campus, they're going to call a contractor to help. So I think that it'd be appropriate to give David Mendez, I mean, what would you think, is $25,000 amount? Or maybe John or Craig could chime in on what they feel like that authority should be? And this is only for emergency things that have to be handled before we can get them on a BOCC meeting.
Yeah. Well, the initial dollar amounts discussed by David himself were 15, 20, or 25.
Okay.
And I just thought for the sake of the size of the project that it would make sense to just give him the $25,000 spending authority. If for some reason, of course, David doesn't manage that correctly, then we can always change that. But I have all the confidence in the world that he will make the right decision for this board and just keep us informed. And anything, and even if he does make the decision, we can always have a meeting to discuss, you know.
Yeah, and we usually will have to come before and ratify it or, you know, do something like we did with the testing that was just approved for this week. So.
Yeah.
Okay. Bill, thoughts on that?
I think $25,000 is the right amount.
Okay. All right. So would you like me to make the motion, or you want to?
I'll take a stab at it.
Okay.
I move that we give David Mendez with Hury authorization to make.
I think twenty.
Go ahead. Bill, do you have something you want to say?
No, that wasn't me.
Oh, sorry. A little echo there.
Okay.
I move that we give David Mendez with Hury authorization to make financial decisions on behalf of the board, up to $25,000 for the Justice Center Expansion, with the understanding that the protocol is he is to notify the board via email immediately after making the decision.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matarie?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye.
All right. Before we get into item two, which is why everybody is so anxiously waiting, I actually will have to leave because I have another meeting in Hayden at 3:00. And I understand, Bill, are you able to be on the phone until 3:00?
No, I have to be at a meeting also at 3:00.
Okay. So I will, I will probably just call in. That way I'll be on the phone during the travel time and then.
Sure. And I will take the baton.
Okay, fantastic. Yep. So apologize, folks, but this kind of ran up against a time schedule and we fit you in where we could. So I would turn it over to Bowden now to open subcontractor packages for work package three.
All right. Starting with bid package number 15, casework.
Can everybody hear John?
Hey, you want to speak up? All right. Everybody hear me?
Yeah.
All right. Starting with bid package number 15. Right?
Number two.
Oh, that's not right. Okay, yeah, number 15 there. All right. This bid is from Candela Construction and their base bid amount is $442,364.30. And they have acknowledged all three addenda and completed their checklist. This next bid, also for bid package number 15, is from Pacific Cabinets, Inc. Their base bid is $720,672. They've acknowledged three addenda and completed their checklist. This next one, also for bid package number 15, casework, Beck Cabinet Company. Beck. B-E-C-K. With a base bid of $599,611. They've acknowledged all three addenda and completed their checklist. Next one, also for bid package number 15, Advanced Custom Cabinets, with a base bid of $486,175. They've acknowledged all three addendum and completed their checklist. All right. Are there any others for bid package number 15 that you've seen in there? I think they're all sorted, so that should be it. So I'd like to acknowledge receipt of all bid package number 15 bids. We'll go to bid package number 16, Metal Panels.
Just reminding everyone, if you're leaving, make sure you've signed in on the sign-out and sign-in sheet before you go.
This first bid is from Axiom Construction and Consulting for a base bid amount of $424,950. Their alternate number one price is an add of $460,000. $460,000. And their alternate number two price is an add of $28,425. They've acknowledged all three addendum and completed their checklist. This next bid is from Kilgore TEC Products with a base bid of $458,000, excuse me, $458,500. Their alternate number one is not applicable. And alternate number two is an add of $76,500. They've completed, acknowledged all three addenda and completed their checklist. This next bid is also for bid package number 16, from Icon Corporation, with a base bid amount of $607,800. And their alternate number one is $542,000. And alternate number two is $30,000. And they've acknowledged all three addenda and completed their checklist. All right. Next bid is from Flynn BEC with a base bid amount of $609,000. Alternate number one is an add of $529,000. And alternate number two is an add of $46,000. They've acknowledged three addenda and completed their checklist. Next bid, bid package number 16, from Kruger Sheet Metal Company, for a base bid of $718,960. Alternate number one is not applicable. And alternate number two is $119,800. They've acknowledged three addenda and completed their checklist. All right. That was it for bid package number 16. Like to acknowledge receipt of bid package number 16 bids. And move on to bid package number 17, Roofing. This bid is from Axiom Division VII with a base bid of $465,700. Their alternate number one price is $14,000. And alternate number two is $19,000. They've acknowledged three addenda and completed their checklist. This next bid is from Icon Corporation with a base bid of $542,000 even. Alternate one is an add of $5,000. Alternate two is an add of $26,000. They've acknowledged three addenda and completed their checklist. Next bid is from Flynn BEC with a base bid of $529,000 even. Their, excuse me, their alternate number one is an add of $56,000. And alternate two is an add of $17,000. They've acknowledged three addenda and completed their checklist. Next bid is from Jimmy's Roofing with a base bid of $468,300. Alternate number one is an add of $2,000, excuse me, $3,752. And alternate number two is a deduct of $58,494. A deduct of $58,494. They've acknowledged three addenda and completed their checklist. That's the end of the bid package number 17 bids. I'd like to acknowledge receipt of all bid package number 17 Roofing bids. And move on to bid package. Twenty, is that right? Are there no eighteen? Are there? Well, we can do bid package number 19 here. Sort those. Bid package number 19 for doors, frames, and hardware. This is a bid from Bowden Construction Company with a base bid of $549,678. Acknowledged three addenda and completed the checklist. As far as I know, unless there's another 19 in there. Okay, we'll do bid package number 20. Overhead Coiling Doors. First bid is from Continental Door Company with a base bid of $116,003. Acknowledged three addenda and completed their checklist. Continental Door Company. All right. This next bid, also bid package number 20, is from Dupree Building Specialties with a base bid of $154,933. Acknowledged three addenda and completed their checklist. That's it for 20. Like to acknowledge receipt of bid package 20 bids. All right. Next up is bid package number 21. This first bid is from All-Star Glass Company with a base bid of $117,000. And acknowledged three addenda and completed their checklist. All-Star Glass's bid was $117,000. All right. Next bid is from Modern Glass Company with a base bid of $1,425,156. They've acknowledged three addenda and completed their checklist. Next bid is from CNS Glass with a base bid amount of $802,300. Acknowledged three addenda and completed their checklist. Okay. That's the end of bid package number 21, Glazing. Like to acknowledge receipt of bid package 21 Glazing bids. And now it's bid package number 22, Framing and GWV. This first bid is from All Wall Contracting with a base bid amount of $2259,360. Correct. Alternate number one is an add of $563,000. Alternate two is an add of $198,714. And alternate three is an add of $15,200. They acknowledged three addenda and did not include their checklist. All right. Next bid is from LAC Drywall with a base bid of $2398,000. Alternate one is not applicable. Alternate two is not applicable. And alternate three is an add of $61,200. They acknowledged three addenda and completed their checklist. Next bid is from Performance Contracting, Inc. with a base bid amount of $2116,799. Alternate one is not applicable. Alternate two is not applicable. And alternate three is an add of $25,099. They acknowledged receipt of addendum one, two, and three and completed their checklist. This next bid is from Modern Drywall with a base bid of $226,000. $226,000. Alternate.
Two zero two six.
Alternate one is not applicable. Alternate two is not applicable. And alternate three is an add of $12,000. They acknowledged three addenda and completed their checklist. Okay, that's the end of bid package number 22. Like to acknowledge receipt of bid package number 22 bids. Next up is bid package number 23, Acoustical Ceilings. First bid is from Performance Contracting, Inc. with a base bid of $314,142. Acknowledged three addenda and completed their checklist. First, next bid is from Noise Control of Washington with a base bid of $299,774. Acknowledged three addenda and completed their checklist. That's it for bid package number 23. Like to acknowledge receipt of bid package number 23, Acoustical Ceiling Bids. Next bid package is number 24, Flooring. First bid is from IBEX Flooring with a base bid of $823,972. And alternate one is a deduct of $27,855. They acknowledged three addenda and completed their checklist. All right. Next bid is from Great Floors LLC with a base bid of $711,539. Alternate one is a deduct of $66,595. Acknowledged three addenda and completed their checklist. Like to acknowledge receipt of all bid package 24 Flooring Bids. Next section, next bid package is number 25, Painting. This first bid is from All Wall Contracting with a base bid of $202,250. Two oh two, two five zero. Alternate one is not applicable. And acknowledged three addenda and did not complete the checklist. Next bid is Performance Contracting, Inc. with a base bid of $453,449. And then. Correct. Yep, still bid package number 25. Alternate one, number one is an add of $18,700. Acknowledged three addenda and completed the checklist. Next bid is for bid package number 25, Painting, from River City Painting of Spokane, Inc. with a base bid of $184,965. Alternate number one is an add of $9,000. Alternate number one is an add of $9,040. Acknowledged three addenda and completed their checklist. Next bid is, uh, from SNS Coatings, Inc. with a base bid amount of $277,900. Alternate number one is an add of $14,000. They acknowledged three addenda and completed their checklist. Like to acknowledge receipt of all bid package number 25, painting bids. All right. Next bid package is bid package number 26, General Works and Specialties. First bid is from Bowton Construction Company with a base bid of $1,042,962. They acknowledged three addenda and completed the checklist. All right, like to acknowledge receipt of all bid package number 26 bids. Bid package number 27 was canceled for the record as issued in addendum number one. So next bid package is bid package number 28. First bid is from Mackin and Little, Inc. with a base bid amount of $1,179,736. They acknowledged three addenda and completed their checklist. All right, uh, next bid is from ECO Services LLC with a base bid amount of $953,000. Addenda and checklist are good. Like to acknowledge receipt of all bid package number 28, plumbing bids. Next is bid package number 29, HVAC. First bid is from ACI Northwest, Inc. with a base bid of $2146,000. Alternate number one is not applicable, and addenda and checklist are good. Like to acknowledge receipt of all bid package number 29, HVAC bids. All right, bid package number 30. This first bid is from McKinstry with a base bid amount of $2,861,520. Alternate number one is an add of $207,165. Alternate two is an add of $6,423. Addenda and checklist are good. Next bid is from Peterson Electric, Inc. Uh, base bid is $2,897,000. Alternate one is an add of $160,000. And alternate two is an add of $9,000. Uh, addenda and checklist are good. Next bid is from Innovative Electrical with a base bid of $2,381,920.96. Correct. Alternate one is an add of $230,426.85. And no alternate two provided. Acknowledged three addenda and checklist is good. Next bid is from Energized Electric with a base bid of $2,890, excuse me, $2,890,000. Alternate number one is an add of $58,959. And alternate two is an add of $2,692. Alternate one is an add of $58,959. Alternate two is an add of two, uh, excuse me, $2,692. Addenda and checklist are good. Like to acknowledge receipt of all bid package number 30 bids. All right, next bid package is number 31, landscaping. First bid is from Creekside Landscape with a base bid of $112,300. Creekside Landscape. With a base bid of $112,300. Addenda is, and checklist are good. Next bid is from Hidden Rivers Irrigation and Landscaping, Inc. with a base bid of $99,800. All three addenda are acknowledged and checklist is good. Next bid is from Clearwater Summit Group, Inc. with a base bid of $81,000. Uh, addenda and checklist are good. Like to acknowledge receipt of all bid package 31, landscaping bids. Bid package number 32, site concrete. First bid is from Five Star Concrete, Inc. Base bid of $63,820. Addenda and checklist are good. Next bid on bid package 32, site concrete, is Liberty Concrete with a base bid of $85,979. Addenda and checklist are good. From a very secure envelope, the next bid is from Cameron Riley LLC for bid package 32 with a base bid of $78,110. Acknowledged three addenda and checklist is good. That is, I'd like to acknowledge. What is this one?
Number two.
Oh, acoustical ceilings. Acknowledged receipt of all bid package 32 bids. This next bid is labeled bid package number two, acoustical ceilings on the envelope, but this is, uh, the bid form is for bid package number 23, acoustical ceilings from On The Level Solutions LLC. On The Level Solutions LLC with a base bid of $314,000. And addenda and checklist are good. All right, I'd like to acknowledge receipt of all bids for work package number three. I think that's it.
Well, thank you very much. Uh, that concludes item num, well, item two. I would like to, uh, actually entertain a motion. If Commissioner Brooks or Duncan, are you on the line?
I'm on the line. If you're ready for a motion, I can get you one.
I am ready for a motion, thank you.
I move that we acknowledge the receipt of the subcontractor bids for work package three.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Chair Protem Matarri.
Aye.
Chair Duncan.
Aye.
Okay, that concludes business. Next up, our public comment. Would anyone like to speak? Uh, just go, go right up to the podium there and just make sure that the red light is green. There's a button, just hit on the side, you see? You see the red light? Okay.
Uh, bid package 18, I dropped it off upstairs for EFS, for All Wall Contracting. Not sure what happened with it.
Okay, uh, what's the procedure there? Do we just, we ask her, she can look around up there, maybe?
Uh, can we have someone go upstairs? Cause if it was, are you sure it was delivered?
Yeah, I had three envelopes upstairs, yeah.
And they were, um, delivered before the deadline?
Yep.
Okay, looks like we have one. Um, should we undo?
Just one.
Commissioner Duncan, Brooks, should we, uh, undo the motion? Or should we just go ahead and accept it, do you think?
I don't think there's any need to do anything. Just find out if, um, they can locate that package. Then it can be read into the record and you can accept that one as well if it's found.
Yeah, okay, well, it was found. And so they're gonna go ahead and read it right now. And then we'll just do a second motion to accept it.
All right. Uh, this is a bid for bid package number 18, EIFS, EFS, uh, from All Wall Contracting, Inc. with a base bid of $583,000 even. An alternate number one, an add of $225,445. Acknowledged three addenda and, uh, there's no checklist.
Any other bids out there? Okay, I will take a motion to accept the All Wall Contracting bid for bid package number 18.
I move we acknowledge the receipt of the bid package number 18 bid.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Chair Protem Matarri.
Aye.
Chair Duncan.
Aye.
Okay, back to public comment. Does anyone have anything they'd like to say? Jonathan, anyone on the telephone? No? Okay, uh, 2:43, meeting adjourned. Thank you all.